Good morning and welcome to the skinny for Friday, February 28th. I'm Mitch Perry, the senior political reporter for the Florida Phoenix, joined with a full house this morning, of course, creative living editor in chief Ray Rowe, and back just from the Grand Canyon, independent reporter and bestselling author Ben Montgomery. Welcome back, Ben.
Thanks very much.
Happy birthday, Mitch. Mitch's birthday yesterday.
Yesterday. Hey, thank you very much, Ray. Uh, hey, no, we don't. We want to do that. Hey, but we do want to say, uh, you know, Ray, of course, we were here last week raising money for the station and we did make our financial goal as the station did. The station had a great fundraising drive. I understand just talking to Randy Zimmerman.
News and affairs, uh, blocks made all their money and, uh, yeah, thankful for that.
Very thankful and, you know, we've gone a long gap, uh, six months, actually. And I was asking Randy, we're going to be back doing this not too long, like late May, actually, uh, we'll be back sooner. So hopefully, and but they are, I'm told our goals will not be as, as big financially. But anyway, want to give shout out to all the listeners who are listening right now, but also who called us in. Also, programming note, I will not be here for the next stuff. Maybe I'll be back on the air once in a while here, but I'll be in Tallahassee. Of course, the regular legislative session begins on Tuesday. And so, of course, that's my main gig is covering the state legislature. So I'll be up there in Tallahassee, uh, but we'll be in good hands with Ben and Ray up until then. Okay, so what's, what's going on today on the show? So we're gonna, later in the program, there's a new documentary that is out now about the gas plant district in St. Petersburg, which I think a lot of listeners know about if they didn't know about it before, but certainly this whole discussion about the Tampa Bay Rays proposed new baseball stadium, which may or may not happen. Uh, that, of course, is all about trying to make amends in some ways with the, the gas plant district. And we know that's what was torn up back in the eighties. Uh, there is a new documentary. We're going to talk to the director of that. But first, in the studio right now, we've got Tampa City Councilman Louis Viera. Uh, welcome to the skinny, Councilman Viera.
Welcome back. Yes, sir. It's a great pleasure to be here with y'all today. Real good pleasure.
So much to talk to you about. Let's start at the top, though, because, uh, you are, you've been around now, basically, uh, I remember, as you well know, I covered your race intensely against Jim Davison in the special election back in December of 2016, winning by just 65 votes over Davison. You've been in there in Tampa City Council ever since. Uh, you've got two more years left in office, but there's been, you know, now that we're in 2025 and political junkies are considering like, who's going to be running, uh, for mayor in a couple of years? And your name has always been bandied about. And then you announced, uh, last week, you're not going to run for mayor. Tell us, tell us about that.
So, so, good question, Mitch. So I, I did it for a number of reasons. Number one, you know, there, there's a time and a season for everything in life. I, I feel, uh, you know, family issues, et cetera, just not, not my time right now to run for mayor. I'm relatively young in the political world, 47. So, you know, when, when the former president, uh, ran for reelection at 82 or whatever, where I'm young as all hell, I guess. But, um, but you have that issue. Then number two, we have some really, really critical weight issues here in the city of Tampa. And I spoke about this yesterday, to have the idea of people going, well, you're doing this because you're running for mayor. You're doing this because you're running for me. I don't want that. If there's something I pride myself, it's, it's authenticity, which is if I'm fighting for something, it's because I'm, I got that Latino passion going on for that stuff, right? So I, I always hate that. So, you know, for me, it was about making sure that people know where I stood, uh, on the issues and, and where I'm going to take that with.
So, uh, not can do the mayor's race, but perhaps another office you might be looking at?
Absolutely, yes. I'm looking at county, state stuff, you know, looking a whole lot right now at state representative, uh, and everything potentially, the county, um, you know, very dear friends with Fentress Driscoll, who's a, a state representative, District 67 representative or a House Democratic leader, known her for many, many years. And, you know, would obviously be an honor to, you know, try to go for that seat and, and everything. A lot of issues in Tallahassee I care about very passionately, especially Medicaid waiver, uh, for the intellectually disabled, which is critically underfunded. Every time I see us doing another tax cut on corporations or on whatever, I think they did one on guns, or they're going to try to do one on guns recently. Um, I go, you could put that money in Medicaid waiver, so.
You know, so many things to talk about. Let's, let's stay with the state issue for a moment, because you, I wrote a piece about this. Ron DeSantis, Governor DeSantis was in Tampa on Monday as he announced his new, uh, Florida Doge program essentially, right? They're going to be going, looking at things like the universities, uh, you know, how the spending is going there. But this is, he had mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, and I know you weighed in on social media about this, but I asked the governor on Monday, what's with you talking about maybe getting, uh, trying to phase out property taxes? And he said, um, you know, again, that this is not going to happen anytime soon. There's going to, there is a bill filed, this section, that would study that, because obviously that's such a big source, source of revenue. We don't have state income tax here, of course. Uh, and you, um, and, and, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens with that, but you have come out very strongly as a local official here, because obviously that is such a, um, a source of revenue when it comes to education, when it comes to infrastructure, when it comes to a public safety. Talk about that if you could.
Yeah, so, you know, I came out strong on that. Um, you know, my view with property taxes is mend it, don't end it. Are there, there, when you're dealing with taxation, you're going to have gray, you're going to have challenges. You're taxing people. You're not going to have a perfect system, right? So I go, look, let's talk about more accommodations for seniors. Let's talk about potentially, if done right, a, a higher deduction, et cetera, if done right. But the idea of getting rid of property taxes is, is just ridiculous. It's like a dentist telling you, you don't have to floss anymore, right? Don't go back to that dentist. And I think that politicians who are selling that should frankly not be taken seriously whenever it comes to our priorities. Um, there are certain things that we have to find. I talk a lot about public safety. You mentioned public schools. Last night I was at my son's school, uh, Freedom High School, and, you know, one of his classes is going to go to New York City, uh, Carnegie Hall. And you talk about why we need public schools, a place where all kids of all different backgrounds, different faiths, different socioeconomic backgrounds, and they're going to go to Carnegie Hall. Talk about why we got to remember how features are made here in Florida. That's a good example.
This property tax thing, as Mitch alluded to, seems like a pipe dream right now, but as we know, anything can happen in, in politics now. Has there any, been any chatter about, uh, legislators possibly passing off and trying to find that revenue from renters, like some kind of renters tax?
Yeah, so, so I tell folks that, that, you know, renters do pay property taxes in effect because people pass it on, right? They pass on the cost of maintaining property to the renter. The most draconian part of this is that you're gonna need to make up that revenue, and how you're going to do it? Through punitive sales taxes. And the more you earn, the less you're going to pay as a percentage of your income through sales taxes, and we're going to do that here in Florida. I, I always, I've joked for years that in Tallahassee, I, I think that Republicans sometimes have a drinking game where they come up with the most ridiculous obscene ideas and they go, okay, let's do this. No, no, that's too much. Okay, let's do it. And this is one of them.
Well, we should say that, in fact, it's, it's far from happening immediately, because if, if this, um, what might happen this year is if the Republicans do support this, they would put this as a resolution, they support that, and it would go on the ballot in 2026, where everybody would get a chance to vote on it. It would need to get 60% as we well know, uh, that high threshold here. So, uh, it's, it's far from happening, but the fact of the matter is Ron DeSantis is very serious about getting this out there in the ether and getting people to talk about it. And look, you talk to homeowners and they're like, heck, yeah, you know, like I, I, yeah, and just to say this, like, you know, when you pay for anything else, you pay a tax upfront. How, you know, properties, you know, time you keep on paying and paying and paying for it.
I already paid my property taxes on my main property up north. Why would I want to pay property taxes on the one I have down here?
So, uh, okay, let's talk about hurricanes, okay? Um, and, and by the way, I saw this, can I give this to you and to any of the members of the Tampa administration who are listening right now? There was an op ed published, uh, this week in the Tampa Bay Times, excoriating the city.
I saw that.
Uh, yeah, but the author by name of Larry D. Clifton, and I'm just going to read a little excerpt here. He says, "The city's failure to elevate stormwater management to a top priority is political malpractice. While millions are allocated for police, housing, and parks, flood control continues to languish at the bottom of the budgetary totem pole. This is not just short sighted, it's dangerous. Protecting a coastal community from floodwaters is not optional, it's basic governance. Yet Tampa's leaders have consistently failed this most fundamental test." This is really coming, rising to the occasion, obviously after Hurricane Milton and Huelene uh, from last fall. Uh, Councilman Viera, you know, talk to us about that, especially about your constituents up there in North Tampa.
Absolutely. Well, look, with, with regards to that op ed, the buck stops here. And if you're in office and something happens under your watch, you got to answer for it. You know, when Milton hit, it was Friday, as I recall, I think October 9th or 10th, as I recall. Um, I called the administration and I said, listen, it's Friday, Tuesday, we're going to have a town hall. If y'all want to come out here, I'd love to have y'all. We're going to have a lot of angry people, and if I was them, I'd be angry too, okay? Uh, because of what happened out there. So we did that. I've had about 10 or 11 town halls in, in areas in North Tampa, um, that, that have gotten flooded, and I can get into that. It's, it's beyond tragic. You know, what I've tried to do since then is a number of things. Number one is to have transparency on what happened. I work with the county to have an independent review on, on what exactly happened during this time, that you have a lot of zone X areas, places like Plant City, places like North Tampa, places like certain parts in South Tampa, places like Town and Country, uh, that were flooded. So to talk about our infrastructure and see what exactly happened out there, that's number one. Number two is to have outreach, which is people have got to see their elected officials. It's a time for elected officials in post hurricane Tampa to have thick skin and big hearts. Thick skin because people are angry, and I would, again, I would be angry too, but big hearts because people are hurting. People really are hurting right now. The stuff I've seen out there breaks my heart. And then to have a big heart with our wallets. Uh, I motioned immediately after the hurricanes for housing assistance, couldn't get it passed with the idea that people go, well, FEMA is going to help. I, I disagree, right? I disagree. But 120 days later, we got three and a half million. I'm going to be trying to get another million dollars, right? So we're making headway, but people are right to be frustrated. People are right to be frustrated, and I'm here to listen and to help.
And if you're one of those frustrated people, don't forget, you can reach out to us by calling 813-239-9663, or sending us an email, dj@wmnf.org.
Yeah, we are talking to Tampa City Councilman Louis Viera. He's here till about 11:35, maybe 11:40. He says he can go that long, so we've got some time here to get into different issues with the city of Tampa.
Councilman, let me ask you something. You know, you're big on meeting your constituents out there, working for them. Those, those are the people that are most important to you. As you ponder what your next political move is, there's a lot of speculation about whose seat you could run for on the county commission.
Sure.
Okay, uh, you know, Mr. Wostel, you know, you could possibly challenge him. Some people say Hagan, politically, I don't know. But talk about, like, how much you think about the impact you could have locally when you're weighing whether to run for a state seat or, or a local seat, right?
Absolutely. So, you know, the county commission, you're, you're one of seven mayors in the county commission, and that's, that's a lot of, of discretion there to be used for the better. Um, obviously, I don't agree with a lot of the things that a county commission has done from a political perspective. I work with a lot of those folks on a heartboard, uh, and we, we work together very well, which I'm very, very proud to say, you know, but one of the big challenges in the county commission right now is the idea of the charter review commission, and are they going to go to single member districts? So in other words, are you going to run in '26 and then be, you know, be gerrymandered in '28? There's a lot of speculation on that, so we obviously have to look into that a lot right now.
And just on a philosophical level, let's talk about that, because this has been an issue that's gone, I wrote about this for Creative Living 10, 12 years ago. Um, right now in Hillsborough County, a very large county, over a million people, right? Million, three, four. Uh, you have, uh, four districts, you know, north, south, east, and west Hillsborough County representatives, and then you have three out large seats. Uh, the argument has been that, you know, it's too wide right now for these single districts and that you should, you either need more or you need, yeah, make them all single district. And there's all these variations, maybe, I mean, you know, Miami-Dade, I know, I believe Orange County, they have more than seven county commissioners, so there are all variations on that. Then you also have an anti-government thing always going on where people like, or like, we don't want to have more elected officials and pay them more money, et cetera, et cetera. Where are you philosophically on that?
Sure, well, I mean, my, the dispositive issue for me is that voters should pick the electeds and not vice versa. And I don't care if it's Rhode Island or a democratic state like Massachusetts or New York or Florida. Take a look at Florida, where we pass, I know the, the, uh, pro-choice amendment failed to get 60%, but it got 57, 50%. That is a strong majority here in the state of Florida that is pro-choice. And yet you look at the legislature, I, I used to say this in Florida, I can't say it anymore, but that we have the population of California, but the legislature of Mississippi, I don't think.
That's a Daniel Ruth line, by the way.
It was it? I thought I made that up.
Oh, sorry, sorry?
Yeah, no, I swear to God, that's funny. And Daniel Ruth is a very valid constituent, and Norte is a good dude. That's funny. So, but, but, you know, we've seen changes in Florida, so on that, if we have anything like that, it's got to be done by a truly independent body based upon the needs of the county. Um, you know, there, there's a lot of gray there, so to speak, but my main issue is not letting politicians pick the voters, which is what's going to happen. Um, and whether the Republicans or the Democrats do it, I think it's wrong.
You know, we mentioned, actually, Daniel, you say his constituent, he goes in, I think, Forest Hills area. You represent Forest Hills, Tampa, uh, university area, uh, communities around Fowler and Bush. These are nothing glamorous areas, let's be quite honest about Tampa. When you think about Tampa, but there's a lot of population there. And yet, when it comes down to, uh, politics, when it comes to, you know, it's South Tampa, downtown, it's, oh, it's nothing new under the sun when it comes to that, but you represent that area, and I know you're quite passionate about those folks not getting their just deserves, as it were, uh, you know, and, and is that frustrating for you?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, I've said, and I use this line a lot, and some people laugh at me, um, you know, in a loving way, but it's, North Tampa is the working class backbone of Tampa. It is. It's where our welders live, our first responders, our teachers, our nurses, our electricians, our administrative assistants, it's people who go to work every day, pay taxes, and they don't have time to be politically involved, but they do got time to be ticked off about what's happening, and they are, and they are. And, you know, the folks out there, whether it's university area, whether it's off 113th with Timber Falls, whether it's Forest Hills, whether it's Copeland Park, overlooked, overlooked Tampa, et cetera, they're overlooked, they are. And I could give example out of example, and I recently said in city council that I got a big chip on my shoulder about it. I was talking to someone in the administration and, and they were saying, you know, you're really hitting on this issue hard. People think it's because you're running for mayor. And it was about a month ago, and I said, I'm not, number one, I'm not running for mayor. You're going to find that out very soon. But number two, it's because I got a chip on my shoulder. I do about those folks, because these are the people that are ignored in politics. And from a national perspective, you take a look at what's happened with Trump, who I think is a moral abomination, and I mean that, but people go to folks like that because they think that people don't care about them. They do in politics today, that the middle of the middle class, the working class, and those working hard to get into the working class don't matter to politicians.
You know, it's been interesting to watch you on, on council recently, because you are normally pretty even keel compared to some other people on, on there, but you can really feel your frustration, and it's, it's strange to see that. Um, you haven't really lobbed on to this idea of the administration's slow walking certain things. That's been said a lot, right? But you did, you, you seem frustrated, you know, when you're talking about, what, this fire station is not going to break ground until after I'm out?
Yeah.
Why is this taking so long? You know, looking back on, on all this time that you've had on the dais, would you have done anything differently?
So that's a great question. So a couple of things, I, I always say that I talk to lawyers who are going to run for office, especially lawyers at big firms, we tend to be establishment people. I'm just, look, I'm just speaking a plain.
And would you tell the listeners, you are a lawyer?
Oh, yeah, no, thank you. I am a lawyer.
When he said dispositive, you know he's a lawyer.
Oh, I know. You're damn right. That's funny, dispositive. So, you know, a lot of times, some lawyers who get in public office, um, tend to be more establishment. It takes you a few years to push back on things, right? I feel that that happened in my first few years. Again, I'm, I'm a person, and, and as an elected official, you got to be honest about certain things. You know, with the mayor, with this mayor, Jane Cast, we've had disagreements, I remember, with the charter review issues. Uh, we, um, over, I chose to overrode her. I think we, we had five charter amendments that we could override her on, I overrode her on all five. And obviously, if you take a look at this issue here with the storms, I mean, I work with the county to have a review of what happened in the administration on, on, uh, after the hurricane. Again, and not to point fingers, we don't know what's going to happen, but in other words, that's certainly something where you go, hey, look, let's look further, let's see what happened for my constituents. So there, I do push back, but I'm not, how shall I say? I try not to play politics with it. I try not to make it about personal issues or, 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 you know, the vision I may want to sow, et cetera. I try to see the best in people, but punch hard to get, if you take a look at my record on council, on three fire stations, an apprenticeship ordinance, a returning citizens ordinance, 10 million in new parks for new Tampa, I got those things because I punch hard, but I know how to work with people.
And a tough vote on, on, uh, this culvert in, in, uh, in South Tampa on Howard Avenue. That's been, can I ask one more?
Yeah, please, yeah.
Mitch, you know, we're talking about this stuff, you know, you've mentioned these words, justice, diversity, pluralism, inclusion, right? Uh, you said these are not words to hide, they are representative of how we've progressed as a country, but I think for a long time, as you're alluding to, Democrats have also been quick to throw those words out, but not kind of stand up for them in the same way that conservatives rally for nativism and things that give way to xenophobic and bigoted stuff. You're a pragmatic person, but how can you still be a bridge builder or even combat these really ugly parts of the world right now while remaining gentlemanly?
So that's very true. So, you know, I, I show people that in my first two months, I got elected in a centrist district by 65 votes. In my first two months, I was the first member of city council to give money to the fund to move the Confederate Memorial. I think the second elected official to speak at a rally to move the Confederate Memorial. And I spoke at a refugee rally for Syrian refugees who continue to be oppressed right now, especially with this administration. So I've always been one who works with people, but I got my core values, right? And when it comes to those issues, I look at it from a historical perspective. When I look at Trump, I look at figures like Father Coghlan or Charles Lindbergh, I look at Joe McCarthy, I look at George Wallace, and I think that he is a continuation of a lot of that, except he got to the White House. And we have to speak truth to power on those issues. However, take a look at the county and working on that independent review of hurricanes. I work with a lot of Republicans on that, because there are certain issues where you go, look, you think I suck, and I think you suck on certain issues, but we can work together on this. And that's what people want, which is to fight like heck for your values, like I always have. You know, you take a look at the returning citizens ordinance, I'm also going to be preparing a proposal for returning citizens.
And tell our listeners about that.
Oh, yes, sir, yep. So I, I had passed with the help of A Brown Ministries, Florida Rights Restoration Coalition, et cetera, an ordinance that gave contractors incentives to ban the box, hire returning citizens, and created the first city-county returning citizens program about two years ago with the help of county commissioner Gwen Myers and our friends over in the county. You know, I, I joke, I, I don't work on returning citizens because Tampa Palms likes that, okay? Right? I work on it because I care about it. I work about it because I was raised in church, and I think it's the right thing to do in social justice matters. So, you know, people who are Republicans who work with me, they know my values on these issues. They know that, like, as a son of Cuban refugees, I take that very seriously. I know, but most Cuban refugees are very conservative, but that we're refugees. And I'm not going to forget Lo Cuano Soy, the Venezuelans, the Nicaraguans, the Syrians, the Afghan folks who are being, um, uh, abandoned as refugees today. I'm not ever going to forget where I come from. So I work hard with people, but that doesn't mean I abandon my values.
We are talking with Tampa City Councilman James Viera here.
Yeah, thanks very much. Sorry to click back to this, but in the, in the list of, uh, uh, folks that you were comparing Trump to earlier, you rattled off Charles Lindbergh, and, uh, just stuck in my mind, because I think people forget about Lindbergh. Can you refresh our memory on who he was and his change?
Obviously, a great hero in, in, initially in the 1920s it was, but in the beginning of World War II, um, he kind of sounded off, uh, a, a charge of America first, and the idea that we ought to stay out of foreign conflicts. And of course, I mean, we all know what would have happened if we listened to Charles Lindbergh in 1940, 1941, et cetera. So, you know, when it comes to him, he certainly demonstrated, and obviously you're an exceptional student of history, much better than I am, um, but he demonstrated a, um, a nativism and a form of isolationism that I think is associated with the populist right that the Republicans have married. I, I wake up and look at the Republican Party, I'm 47, and I go, you know, where have you gone, Joe DiMaggio? Where have you gone, Ronald Reagan? And all, and again, I didn't agree with those guys on a lot of things, but you go, there were certain core values. There's very little relationship between the Republican Party today. Again, it's right wing populism. George Wallace in 68, for me, is the closest thing to what Trumpism is today in 1968, that campaign.
Yeah, interesting. Now, I want to go back to, again, to Tampa City Councilman Louis Viera here is our guest here on the skinny at WMNF, 88.5 FM. Uh, a listener wants to mention that the fact, you know, there's so many different things you can talk about the Trump administration is doing right now. He's talking about the mass firings at NOAA, talking about how we're here in Hurricane Central, and it seems like a seriously bad idea, David says. I'm, uh, uh, climate change, I want to get your thoughts about that, but I also want to talk to you about this, because this came up, I was at Tiger Tampa Bay, Tiger Bay Club last week, and this issue was brought up, and I know you care about this one. And I think you, I dispute with this other people, including, uh, Councilman Bill Carlson on this, and this is Hoyt Prindle, a candidate who actually ran for city council, also defended this other argument, and that is the idea of, you know, Tampa's municipal elections are, they're literally going to be two years from now in March. Uh, St. Petersburg used to do that back in the day. They moved them, A, they moved into, it was an off-year election like Tampa's are, like in the, you know, the odd, the odd, odd years, as it were. They, St. Pete used to do the same thing, then they moved it to, uh, at least the fall, and then, then now they moved it to literally like, like federal election years. Uh, Tampa does, um, again, it'll be 2027 spring where nobody else really, I know there's some, actually some local elections, Plant City has an election in a couple of weeks, but it, people are not used to voting this time. And so, uh, some people think that we should not be having Tampa elections in March of the off-year, and I think you're one of those proponents of that. Yeah. And again, the argument is, well, that people who say we shouldn't, that should maintain the status quo is, well, you do it in November of the election year, it's going to get lost with all the federal elections and the statewide races, et cetera, et cetera, which possibly is true, but also you get a much larger voter, you know, base of people voting, right? The percentage of, what was the percentage of people who voted in the last election two years ago?
Oh, man, I think like 12% if I recall. It was very little in, in 23, and that was a hot election. I mean, that was, yeah.
The Carlson, uh, Blake Kasper race, you know, Janet Cruz, when her tack, by the way, how are you getting, uh, there was a lot of chaos in that first, uh, that term, first Jane Castor term. And we mentioned Councilman, uh, Bill, Bill Carlson, John Dingfelder, our friend from the Down and Dirty, uh, Orlando Goode, you know, some of your colleagues are no longer there because some of the things that were going on at that time. What, um, you were, uh, you know, not involved with that directly, but you were part of that council.
Sure.[1437.66]
You know, your thoughts about that then, now, now you've got a much calmer, seemingly, atmosphere, at least on the council itself?
Yeah. So in terms of city council right now, it's, the temperature is still too hot, I think it is, but it's better than it was before. And by the way, that's not a statement like we just saw John Dingfelter. Like, to me, John Dingfelter, when I think of like a Bobby Kennedy bleeding heart Democrat, that's John frickin' Dingfelter. Okay, so that's nothing on anybody there, et cetera. I remember a beautiful picture of Bobby Kennedy that John had on his wall at council that I, yeah, but nevertheless, but so we're doing better in that regard, but it still is a little bit hot. And now we're going to get into election season. It's only going to get worse. Things have really changed a lot with city of Tampa politics. And part of it, by the way, is from those municipal elections, right? Because city of Tampa, and I could talk about this for forever, that if you want elections that are going to be less minority, less diverse, more rich people than keep, and by the way, costing us almost a million dollars every four years of taxpayer money, we subsidize because we have to pay for those elections with a supervisor of elections. We pay for those elections, right? Whereas we could have elections during gubernatorial years, do it in August, the runoff in November. Would we be bottom of the ballot? Yeah, but what makes us more special than a judge or than a school board member or than a county commission? What is so special about the city of Tampa that we got to pay a million dollars in taxpayer funding, right? To me, it is protectionism for politicians so that, because I ran in 16. You mentioned Jim Davis, and I ran in a seven-person race. I was literally, because I'm Viera, the last name on the ballot of Trump Hillary. Okay, so I feel that pain because I lived it. But would we have to work harder? Yes. Who cares? Okay, so I think it's protectionism, and it comes at the expense of diversity.
If you were to change, would that be a charter amendment to change that? How would that work?
Actually, I think we could do it by virtue of ordinance.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we could. But I, again, I don't think I had, if I recall, anybody else supporting it on city council.
Ask Marty Shelby about that one.
Well, your colleagues all got elected in March, you know, they all got elected when the 12% people were voting, right? So, you know, they certainly have a vested interest. Okay, so we've got, we only a couple more minutes left. Anybody?
By the way, the turnout in the primary last August was a 19.53%.
Now, August?
In the primary, 2024.
Oh, yes. No, that's different. We're talking, yeah, we're talking about the spring of 23 is what we're talking about.
Yeah, no. And I think Ray saying that there is low turnouts in even years.
Well, even in August, I think that's kind of insane. We have an August election when, if you have any means, you don't even want to be here in Florida in August.
And again, because like I said, there's always two sides to the issue, and that is correct. You do have some primaries and even year elections where things are definitely lower. But I think the greater good or the greater amount of times, you're going to have a lot more turnout in even years. Again, you are going to have some off-years, so that is correct.
Are you glad that you don't have to deal with the Tampa Bay race?
Oh, God, that's awful. I mean, right now, look, there is no political appetite for more, for taxpayer funding of sports. There is none, nor there should, should there be. People are strapped right now with inflation. They've dealt with a whole bunch of issues. They don't want to deal with that. And the city of Tampa, before we allow baseball to come in here, we got to get our roads right. We got to get our infrastructure right. We have so much to do to prepare before we let people in for that party. You know what I mean?
Can we just return to what David emailed about earlier, and he brought it up, I noticed, during the Dingfelter Show, but NOAA is laying people off currently. The firings are expected, this according to the New York Times, the firings are expected to cost more than 800 people their jobs out of a total of about 13,000 staff members. According to one unnamed policy analyst, this loss of talent at NOAA is going to set the agency back years and compromise the integrity of missions that directly support human health and safety, economic prosperity and national security. We are, as you know, at the point of, what, what some people say might feel like extended nuclear war, the beginning of like this intensification of the storms and the surges. And here is the dismantling of an agency that is built to protect us or at least inform us about these storms so that we can be prepared ourselves. How do we locally deal with the news that this is happening? And is there a way to resist this? Is there a way to somehow, you know, fight, 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 I guess?
Fix this. And so, you know, the tragedy of things like global warming and environmental degradation is that you have to deal with them. Local communities should do everything we can. But if you want real movement, it's got to be done on a national level. And we don't unfortunately have consensus on that because you have Democratic presidents who put in strong environmental protections, and they're taken away by the Republicans. There needs to be some sort of bipartisan consensus that I think exists with a lot of the American people on this issues, and sadly, there's not. But local communities should do everything that they can on issues like resiliency. But, you know, there, there's a bigger issue, which is the radicalism of the Trump administration. They're doing things they did not run on, you know? Take a look at what they're doing to staff at Social Security. All this racist stuff done under the banner of opposing DEI, right? Everything. I saw, I won't even get into, but yeah, I know we have time.
One last question for you. Louis, you talked about being a proud Cuban, a proud Cuban Democratic.
Oh, I know, man.
So let's talk quickly about that because Cuban policy in America, it's gone back and forth with different administrations. Joe Biden did some things, but it was so interesting because here in Florida, it's, you know, it's a conservative Democrats even like when it comes to South Florida, as you know. So Joe Biden did last summer, you know, he took, or actually, it was probably only a few months ago, taking Cuba off the terrorist list, which I think is only Iran, North Korea, some of the worst of the worst. And yet, he was condemned by some, even some Democrats in South Florida, wherever you want on that issue.
So, excuse me, I think that my big challenge with that was that it was done last minute. It was done without having any consultation with the Cuban American community.
So you didn't like that?
Oh, no, no, not at all. Especially the way that it was done. Look, when President Obama began to have some level of relations with Cuba, he went into the Cuban American community. And he talked to people and he said, listen, we're going to do this in a collaborative way where we, we give something, they give something, et cetera. And he did it within the spirit of we're doing this to foster liberty in oppressed Cuba. That was done like literally last minute on something that the Trump administration was immediately going to reverse. I didn't see the rational basis.
You didn't like that either when Obama was doing that?
Well, so, you know, back then, actually, yeah, I thought it was, yeah. So I thought, so with Cuba policy, the summer of 2021 during the Patria Vida movement, that changed a lot for a lot of people.
Congressman Kathy Kastner had been a leading champion of fostering relations, and she kind of backed away after that.
Yeah, because ultimately, you get the realization that this government is, is a regime that is not going to change. And if you're going to want to do something where we have relations, right, and they're going to change, they're not going to change. If you're a hammer, everything's a nail, and that is a hammer. And again, by the way, people traveled to Cuba for many different reasons. In 2018, I went with my family to Cuba. I don't condemn people who go to Cuba, especially as part of a family journey. I think that's important. But ultimately, whether you support or oppose the embargo, the end has got to be liberty for Cubans. You've got to have a morally resolute position on the Marxist regime of Cuba, because if you don't, then that's just a nonstarter. And there's a lot of people that don't, in my opinion.
We're going to leave it there.
Tampa City Councilman Louis Viera, thank you so much for coming back on The Skinny.
Thank you, guys. Real pleasure. Thank you all.
Thank you, Louis.
Let's, let's go back to St. Pete here. Let's talk about the trop, but not baseball's future in St. Pete. Let's talk about the past. Let's go to the late 1800s, when there wasn't a baseball team there, at a time when a railroad, the Orange Belt, I believe, brought to St. Pete, black laborers who started what became known as the Gas Plant District. That's 85 acres. They built beautiful two-story houses, ranch homes, bungalow-style homes, ran businesses. But by the 1980s, the neighborhood was being mischaracterized as blighted by city officials and the St. Petersburg Times, when, in fact, the blight, in a lot of cases, was happening where white landlords had property. Residents there, largely because of redlining already, got eminent domained out of the neighborhood so it could be redeveloped. They expected to return, but of course, those plans changed. And St. Pete ended up building a baseball stadium for a team that didn't even exist yet. And stories about the gas plant neighborhood, about 20 of them, I believe, and three historians, they're captured in this new 75-minute film. It's called Raised. It premiered last week in St. Pete. After three years in the making, there's a screening this afternoon in Tampa. I believe we're joined right now by Andrew Lee and Tara Segal. Sorry if I pronounce that wrong. Tara of Roundhouse Creative, you created the film in conjunction with Gwendolyn Reese, president of the African American Heritage Association. Are you there?
Hello.
Hello, yes.
We are here. Thanks for having us. An excellent summary, by the way.
Okay, I never know. I didn't know if it was fake news or anything like that, but I felt like I did a pretty good job there. I should disclose that a long, long time ago, more than a decade ago, Andrew and I were, probably worked together on some film project when I worked at an ad agency. So I'm just going to throw that out there. I wanted to ask you guys a question. You went with R-A-Z-E-D, raised for the title, and that's allusion to that reality that I just spelled out. But you've also talked about another spelling for that word. That's R-A-I-S-E-D, raised, and how the neighborhood does conjure up a lot of great memories for people, especially because Jim Crow stepping outside of the gas plant meant being confronted with this really ugly segregation. Can you say which side of the coin has been more prevalent or impactful for the two audiences that you met with in St. Pete last week?
Wow, yeah, thank you for pointing that out. And I have to give credit to Tara for, for coming up with the name of the film, which I love. In terms of how people have responded to those two meanings, I think it, really, the film is equally balanced in celebrating the joy, and that would be the R-A-I-S-E-D, the joy of the neighborhood. When you ask a former resident or descendant of the gas plant neighborhood to describe what life was like back then, you will see their face light up every time. They recount these joyous memories. The neighborhood was thriving both socially and economically. And I think that's something that, that a lot of folks, including ourselves, before we started making this film, just weren't aware of. And then the other side of the story is, as you mentioned, Ray, that moment when the city of St. Petersburg changed their minds after the residents had moved out, after the residents had bought into this promise of a better life through revitalization, and the idea that they could come back into that same neighborhood and live better lives. A few years after, after that initial pitch, the city changed its mind and, and decided to build a baseball stadium instead. And that's where the R-A-Z-E-D comes in.
I want to talk a little bit about, I think it's 1218 First Avenue South. That's close to where one of two cylindrical gas towers stood. The kids used to climb them because I apparently get a really good view of, of the neighborhood. I mean, these kids were catching crawfish in Booker Creek and stuff like that. It was pretty cool. Almost, I don't know, I'd stop short of utopian, but very pleasant. But there's this guy, Carlos Lovett, one of the guys you talked to to build the proof of concept for this documentary. He's someone whose family became homeless because of the displacement, and he's probably someone who sees that promise of a better gas plant as more of a lie. I know St. Pete Ken Welch, I think, is in the movie, his dad was a gas plant resident. But in your, in all your interviews, were there some people who lived in the neighborhood who were unaware of what happened to families like the Lovetts?
Yes, I think that one of the neat things that came out of the making of this film is reconnecting folks to other people who lived in the neighborhood. So I think Carlos' story was unknown to quite a few people, including Ms. Reese, who was our co-producer. Even though she knew so many stories of folks from the gas plant neighborhood, she didn't meet Carlos until the reunion event, and then got to know his story better through the making of this film. And then I think on the other side of that, Carlos is, I think, the youngest person that we interviewed who did live in the gas plant neighborhood. And so he missed kind of the boom of that 40s, 50s, 60s time period. And so, in the process of the filmmaking, he also got to kind of see a glimpse of what the neighborhood was before his time. And I think I have heard him say that he has a little bit more pride in the neighborhood, and it's just enriched his understanding of where he comes from too, to be able to hear those stories from folks a little bit older than him. So we have, we have somebody, you know, the youngest person, I believe he's in his 50s, and then the oldest person is 100 and a half. So we really, we really were able to capture the stories from kind of a wide swath of folks who lived in the neighborhood.
And if you're just joining us here on The Skinny, the voices you're hearing belong to Andrew Lee and Tara Segal, filmmakers of a new documentary called Raised about the gas plant neighborhood of St. Pete. It premiered in Pinellas last weekend. There's a couple of, there's a screening today in Tampa. And if you want to call us at the studio, it's 813-239-9663. You can text 813-433-0885 or email.
Yeah, Ray, and can you tell me more about the screening? I mean, where can people see this?
Yeah, so, so obviously, we can't talk about prices here on WMNF, but there is a link on USF's website. All you have to do is register. I'm going to drive over there after this.
So it's later today?
It's today, I believe, at 2:30. And right now, it's part of this big film festival. Right now, I think as we speak, there's a documentary about the Tampa Technique, totally unrelated, but related to the Woolworths residents that were commemorated yesterday. So it's a busy day.
Yeah, I just want to ask the filmmakers, yeah, so forget about today, but like going forward, how can people get a chance to see this film?
Yeah, thank you for asking. There's a lot in the works right now. So today is one at USF in Tampa. We have another scheduled at the Palladium Theater here in St. Petersburg, March 30th. So keep an eye on that. And then we're going to continue updating the film's website with, once additional screenings get confirmed, and that is gasplantfilm.com.
And I also want to ask a question. I saw the trailer to the film, and one of the, the folks I see being interviewed there is Watson Haynes, the former Urban League president of Pinellas County. And I know he passed away a couple of years ago. So how long has this, this film been in production?
Yes, and in fact, the film is, is named in his honor. So it's in memory of Reverend Watson Haynes II. We started, well, the whole kind of genesis of this idea happened at that gas plant neighborhood reunion event that Tara mentioned, and that was late, December 21. That's kind of sparked the idea because Tara and I were there, and it was, you know, this really powerful story that we had not heard much of at all. So we started talking about making a film, and then we really got into it early 2022. So a little over three years in the making.
Yeah, you know, you mentioned that reunion is 2021. You were there kind of working a video booth, and I think you were asked to kind of capture happy memories about the neighborhood. But then people kept telling you there was this other side of the story. And bear with me, this is kind of a long question, but like, you know, Ms. Reese, you know, you kind of got, you talked to her next when you realized you wanted to make this film. She jumped onto the production. She's worked with the Rays and they pitched to redevelop the trop site again. We talked a little bit about it, you know, making good on that promise, fulfilling this with the Rays, whether overruns and, and whatnot. I know that you guys remained independent in making of this film, no interference from the city, the Foundation for Healthy St. Petersburg, or the team. But your film also intentionally does not speculate on the future of the site. I believe it was your intent to pass the mic to these residents who had not yet had a chance to tell their part of the story. But this film really does have the potential to redefine someone's idea of community building, urban development, and this concept of quote unquote, progress. Are you comfortable with thinking about what impact your film might have on what happens next on that land and the way a city and community like St. Petersburg engages with the process?
Yeah, you're, you, I mean, you summed it up perfectly there. We went into this wanting to tell the story of what the gas plant neighborhood was like and also what happened there. And we wanted the story to be told through the voices of those who lived it with some additional context from the historians. So really, that, that was our primary goal. And along the way, we just, the residents just touched our, our hearts with their stories. And it was such a privilege to sit there and listen to them and, and, and hear this history. We've, we've had a couple people after come up and say, this is the first time they have felt seen and heard in their entire lives. So that, that, that means the world to us. That's why we got into the making of this. If something, you know, if this influences future decision-making of that same area, that would, of course, be wonderful. I think we, we should take the history into account when we're moving forward, especially when clearly we made some bad decisions, some very bad decisions that affected people's lives for generations. That, we need to know about that, and we need to make sure that that history is part of our understanding of this area as a whole.
And I would think also, because we'd be in production of this, obviously, the, the issues going back to the creation of Tropicana Field, which affected the community so devastatingly, are, are part of the history. But it takes on this whole new residence, right, with the fact that the stadium, the new stadium, if it does come to pass, is supposedly, you know, I mean, Mayor Ken Welch, you mentioned Ray, you know, whose father, former city council member, was part of that district there and was not, you know, not happy what happened there. And so there's a lot more people needing awareness and knowledge. And we heard a lot about that during the debate in the last year with this stadium, which is a controversial idea, by the way. We should remind people of that period in terms of taxpayer money going to this. So it seems to me there's another audience now that is eager to want to know this for their own benefit as we seemingly, well, see what happens going forward, because we really don't even know at this point, actually.
Yeah, and we have some phone calls coming in here. I wanted to ask you guys, so race obviously inherently is baked into the fabric of this movie. And as white filmmakers, you inherently have a different connection to the film you're making. But you did have a crew of black filmmakers with you. Cinematographer Anthony Makin, Zudaru was working on sound, and then Wilson on photography. They helped you capture all of this. And, you know, as I'm saying that out loud, I'm kind of sorry that I didn't think to ask him to come on the show today. But everyone that is working on this film is starting to feel things, right? As you guys start running the tape and listening to the residents, what were some of the post-recording conversations like between you two and, and your black co-filmakers on this?
Yeah, thank you for giving those, those people a shout out. They definitely deserve one. It was cool because we, you know, we conducted, as you mentioned, about 20 interviews with former residents, and then the three interviews with the historians. That took us through mostly 2022 and into 2023, and we had lots of shoot days. We had a few days where we went to the current trop site and were there with residents as they kind of, you know, showed where they're, roughly where their old house used to be and recounted memories. And we would leave those shoots and go to lunch or, you know, during our breaks. And, yeah, we, it did spark a lot of conversation just between us, the filmmakers, as we were learning this history as we went. You know, we did not go into this film understanding what this story was from start to finish. We discovered that along the way. So there was a lot of, lot of conversations. And I think when folks see the film, it'll, it'll spark a lot of dialogue as well.
So we've got a call from a listener here. Let's bring him up. Bill, you're from St. Petersburg, you're on the air.
Oh, hi. I'm on the air?
Yes.
Oh, good. Thank you. I can't believe you're doing a segment on the gas plant. I can't, I've been waiting for years now to hear this. I went to St. Pete High back in the late 60s, early 70s, and I had a good friend who I worked with at the Lamp Post Restaurant. She washed dishes. She also worked daytime at a nursing home. But her residence was in the gas plant area. Her name was Ethel Cucker. And I was a good friend of hers. She was a lovely woman, and she had three or four children, but she owned her own home in the gas plant. Many times I went to her home and we had a great time. And then finally, one day she told me that her home was being bought by the city. And, you know, between you and me, I don't think she was ever advised as to not accept the first payment or the first deal, as people know now. But her home was paid for. Her husband, he was deceased. And it turned out that after the city bought her home that was free and clear in the gas plant, you could actually see the gas plant tanks from the back of her house. She had to finance a home in Gulfport, which now she had payments, which she had to work three jobs instead of two jobs. And, you know, I always thought that was such a crime all these years, that Ethel, in her old age, had to work another job to pay a mortgage because the city wanted her property. And we used to cut through the gas plant area because my parents always went to Webb City back in the heyday. We cut through there and go down 16th Street. And, you know, I, I'm just so glad that finally somebody's bringing this to life because it was a community. It was a neighborhood. It was a neighborhood that was ignored by the middle-class white folks, and I'm middle-class white, so, you know. But the bottom line is this, okay? It could have been a great area had they left it alone. And now it's so damn valuable. What about the descendants of Ethel Mae Tucker getting a share of all this money that they were deprived from now that it's worth all this money? And that's just my only gut feeling. I apologize if I sound a little bit out of line. But, you know, Ethel was such a great lady. And, you know, they bought her house underneath her. She did not have a choice. And now all this property is just all up in the air, and everybody wants a piece of the pie. But, you know, I'm just surprised that there's even a documentary that, you know, it's like all of a sudden, we're digging up the bones of the cemetery and we're discovering real, honest, good things.
Quite literally, there are people buried underneath Tropicana Field, certain parts of that parking lot.
Yeah, I had no, so, you know, I've been there. I was there. I'm 72 years old. I used to go to Ethel's house on Christmas. She was such a, my mother had passed away when I was a teenager. So she was like my adopted mother.
Thank you for sharing that with us. And I'm sure that Andrew and Tara heard so much of that. And I think, you know, somewhere out there, there's so many scholars who've written about gas plant, I'm thinking about Professor Thomas Halleck, who, you know, has been screaming about it forever. But what was so notable about this movie is that it really did literally just hand the mic over to residents to tell their version of it. You know, listening to all that, there's so much that you carry around with it, no matter when you're done with a story or a project. Is there another part of this film that needs to be made, guys? Do you have it in you? Will the hell, will the foundation give you money again to do this, to finish this thing? I mean, you largely self-funded this thing.
Yeah, yes, we did. And I, I think Andrew said it best. Somebody asked something about when is Raised Two coming out? They asked at the premiere, and he said, we're just trying to get through this premiere weekend. So I think that we have been just pleasantly overwhelmed with the response to the film. And for me, the answer is, the second part is playing out now. You know, the story isn't over. We know the development is ongoing, and the learning is ongoing. And we're very proud of this film. We think everyone who lives in St. Pete, who loves St. Pete, who invests here, who moves here, should see it so that we have this common history. But it's not the only thing. Um, you know, you mentioned that there, there are other people who've been talking about this, who have been writing about it, who have been sharing stories. Like there's lots and lots of artifacts and oral history, um, that have been going around about the gas plant neighborhood and other primarily black neighborhoods, uh, in historic St. Pete. So I think it's worth mentioning that like this is, the film is one part of the kind of the tapestry of history that we should all know. And we're hoping that, you know, it gets people interested in learning more about their local area and, and kind of not taking maybe the, the prevailing history or the shortened history or the whitewash history. There's, there's information there if you look for it. Um, but we're proud that this, this film kind of packages it up in a, in a nice accessible way so that it's a good entry point for folks who have never heard this story before, which is, which is how I characterize myself before we got into this project. I had no idea about the gas plant neighborhood. So.
Um, you mentioned the age range of the people who were interviewed in the movie, but how much in the last, you know, week have you been able to engage with students and like really young people? I find when we ask young people what they think about the world and, and what they would change, they have really great answers and can teach old folks like us, um, a lot. Have you been able to engage much with, uh, with younger folks in St. Pete? And then what's, if so, what have, what has their reaction been like to this film?
Yeah, we were interviewed last week by a couple of, um, USF journalism students. We had some very young attendees to the premiere who asked really thoughtful questions. So, um, there's not been any concerted effort to engage with youth right now, although we are exploring screening the film at Gibbs. Um, we've had a couple of requests to try to get it into schools and other local youth programs. So we're definitely open to that. But I think the interest is there and you're right. And I mean, it's great to see that they're engaged and they have great ideas and, and they're interested in history. I mean, I was not interested in local history when I was young. So it's refreshing to, to know that kids, they want to know. Um, and they're, they're going to take that knowledge forward and do something about it.
Tara Segal and, um, Andrew Lee, filmmakers from Roundhouse Creative, who produced Raised with Gwendolyn Reese, the president of the African American Heritage Association. There's a screening at USF in about two and a half hours. Uh, you have to register there, find it on, on USF, but there'll be another one, I understand, March 30th, correct?
Yes, that's right.
And I think it's raisedfilm.com? Is that what it is?
Gasplantfilm.com.
Okay. And we'll link to this in our blog, um, on WMNF about this particular episode. Thank you so much, Andrew and Tara, uh, for joining us today here on the skinny.
Thank you for having us.
Have a good one.
You too.
Well, I look forward to seeing this movie. That's why I was, you know, wanted to see when, when else we can see it.
Yeah, yeah. It's like.
It's only.
I was like begging for a screener. I was like, can I get a screener in the house? But yeah, I'm going to pick up Gloria Jean Royster, who just received a, a great commendation at the Black Art Gala. We're going to watch that, um, today. And, uh, we thank you guys so much for joining us, um, here on the skinny on WMNF Tampa. Mitch, enjoy your vacation in Tallahassee.
Vacation, my friend. I'd be very hard on it ever. But I do again, want to, we have a few seconds left to go. Again, thank the listeners here because again, uh, you know, tremendous support last week, which we, uh, you know, again, this station relies, uh, I don't have to be pitching right now, but it does rely on the public for 70% of our funding here. So, and we'll see what's going to be happening with the, uh, later coming down in terms of the Corporation for Public Broadcasting. Not happening now though. So, I mean, but.
Let me just say a special thanks to Dave, who was the final caller who put us over the edge Sunday morning around, uh, 6:30, 7:00 AM.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's really cool for us to hit the goal and for all the public affairs shows to hit the goal. And it's really cool to be part of this community.
And, and again, you know, hopefully we'll be providing program again in these intense times right now to, you know, for the listeners to really.
In behalf of myself, Irene Matthews on the phone, Skip Sassy on the board, Mitch Perry, Ben Montgomery, Joanna Schulke, the hostess who loves you the most, this is next door in Studio One with art in your ear. Thanks for listening to WMNF Tampa and enjoy five minutes of NPR news.